Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Calagero. It's my honor to welcome everybody here on this special occasion, the ceremonial swearing-in of our newest Norfolk Public Schools Board Member, Ms. Jody Slaughter. I'll say beforehand, she did pressure me to make sure I said nice things about her, so I did alter the speech before coming up here. But this afternoon, not only do we recognize Ms. Slaughter's commitment to serve, but we also celebrate the community that stands with her, her friends, family, and supporters. We thank them for their continued support. Their support reflects the encouragement, love, and strength that make public service possible. We are grateful to share this moment with everyone. Becoming a school board member is both a privilege and a profound responsibility. It means stepping into a role where every decision touches the lives of children and shapes the future of an entire community. It means balancing high expectations with compassion, listening deeply to the voices of families and educators, and keeping students at the center of every conversation and every decision. Ms. Slaughter embraces that responsibility with a dedication to our students and a belief in the promise of public education. Her leadership, her perspective, and her passion for educational excellence will strengthen the board and support our mission to ensure that every student in Norfolk Public Schools thrives. On behalf of the entire school division, I extend my sincere appreciation to Ms. Slaughter for stepping forward to serve and to our school board for its continued commitment to advancing the success of our schools. This ceremony marks an important milestone, and we are proud to share it with all of you that are here today and anybody online. Ms. Slaughter, we look forward to working alongside you as we shape the next chapter for our students and our community, and thank you all for being here to commemorate this moment. Thank you. And now, Mr. Calagero.
Slaughter, will you please join me at the podium? This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Norfolk held in the Circuit Court, and upon examination of the official records deposited therein, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on November 4th, 2025, Jody M. Slaughter was duly elected member of School Board War III in the City of Norfolk for the term prescribed by law. Here you go.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. George Schaefer, Clerk of the Norfolk City Court, will come up and...
Yes.
Have them come up. Raise your hand. All right, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm...
I do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform...
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As a school board member...
As a school board member...
Of the school board of the City of Norfolk.
Of the school board of the City of Norfolk.
For a term beginning...
For a term beginning...
November 17th, 2025.
November 17th, 2025.
And expiring as soon after...
And expiring as soon after...
The December 31, 2026.
The December 31, 2026.
Special election...
Special election.
As a newly elected candidate...
As the newly elected candidate...
May be sworn in...
May be sworn in.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
(laughing). There you go.
You're not going anywhere just yet. At this time, Ms. Slaughter, you're welcome to share some remarks.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm short. So fellow school board members...
Little button on the side.
That says down.
I know it very well.
Thank you. Thank you. Fellow school board members, my family who are watching online, friends and supporters of Norfolk Public Schools, words cannot convey how honored I am to step into the role of an advocate for the city scholars, for this city scholars. I am here today because a core group of people believed I would hold true to that advocacy. And so I begin this journey with gratitude and humility for Councilman Carlos Clanton, who taught me what a quality campaign should look like, as well as the many people who knocked on doors on my behalf, manned voting precincts, and helped fund my campaign. You and the voters you convinced I was worthy of their confidence are the reason why I stand before you today. Let's be real, election campaigns by its nature is very adversarial. There were those along the campaign trail who depicted my profession inaccurately. They called me a developer and an investor, when in reality, I am a mental health professional. I take pride in all of the families and children I have served over the years, so it's no surprise I initially bristled at the portrayal, but I thought about it. There is some truth to the depiction. I am a developer. I believe in doing whatever it takes to develop the profound potential of the scholars who walk through our school doors each and every day. I look forward to supporting the teachers and staff who work so diligently to ensure student success and well-being. I am an investor in Norfolk City Public Schools. I am ready to invest a great deal of time and effort, my skills, and my service. I purpose to have the humility to learn this job from the bottom up, the strength to do it with passionate commitment. I will conclude with two priorities. First, I will act in the framework of the long-held that this community is an all-important partner in the mission to uplift children. And second, everything I do as a school board member will be guided by one prevailing question: Is this action in the best interest of all of our scholars? Thank you for your belief in me now and the support you will lend me in the future.
Thank you all for joining us today. Please enjoy the reception in the hallway, and we will commence our work session at 4:00 P.M. Thank you. I call to order the school board work session. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
The scene.
Here.
Buffalo.
Here.
Martin.
Present.
Folsen.
Here.
Slaughter.
Slaughter.
Present.
Thomas.
Here.
Calagero.
Here.
Our first agenda item, 3.01, is the Virginia Literacy Act. Mr. Brady.
Actually, I'm going to change that to our two outstanding Language Arts and English coordinators, Ms. Nash, our elementary senior coordinator for English Language Arts, and our secondary coordinator, Mr. Clark.
Okay, great.
Come right in.
All right. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair de Calagero, Vice Chair Ms. Thomas, school board members, and Dr. Poe. I'm Lisa Nash, the Senior Coordinator of Elementary English and Language Arts, and I'm joined today by Mr. Jeremy Clark, a Senior Coordinator of Secondary English, and we thank you for the opportunity to share an update on the Virginia Literacy Act, commonly known as the VLA, and its impact on literacy and MPS Norfolk Public Schools. We recognize that several members of the board are new, so we will begin with a brief refresher on what the Virginia Literacy Act is, why it exists, and the major responsibilities that it places on divisions across the Commonwealth. Then we'll move into a deeper look at how MPS is implementing the required components, with particular focus on aligned intervention and student reading plans. We will conclude with time for questions and discussion. So every good lesson begins with an anticipatory set, right? So we're going to, before we get into our presentation, we're going to start with a little warm-up to test your word knowledge skills. Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. On the screen is a list of four words. I want you to take a moment and read each word out loud. We'll do it together, though, not independently, okay? So number one, what word is that?
Testive.
Good job. How about number two?
Runnel.
Very nice. Number three?
Runnel.
All right, and number four?
Phyllis.
Very good. Good job sounding those words out. Three of these words are actually nonsense words, and they are taken from the Middle School Vows Assessment. And one is a real English word. I'm going to ask you to hold up a finger to tell me which word is the real word. You're going to show me a one, two, three, or four. Get it in your mind. Ready? One, two, three, show me. You guys are smart. Did y'all study the slides ahead of time and look it up? No? Good job. The real word is runnel. The others are nonsense words. Our students engage in the same kind of task, reading a list of unfamiliar, made-up words. They cannot rely on memorized sight words or guesswork. They must apply phonics and decoding skills. The nonsense word portion, or pseudo-word decoding, it's also known as, of the vowels, gives teachers and reading specialists precise information about whether students can transfer foundational skills to unfamiliar words, which is a strong predictor of later reading comprehension. Just to clarify, students are not asked to identify which word is real, like we did with you. We just are using this example to simply demonstrate the type of decoding task included on the vows assessment and to highlight Virginia's strengthened focus on foundational literacy skills, including expanded expectations for decoding multi-syllabic words, applying morphology, and maintaining fluency well into upper elementary and the middle school grades. You guys did a great job on that. All right. So that warm-up illustrated the foundational skills that the VLA is designed to strengthen. So what is the VLA? Unanimously passed in 2022, the VLA is legislation that responds directly to a statewide literacy crisis. One in three K-2 students in Virginia are reading below benchmark, and many students in grades three through eight are not passing their reading SOL. The VLA is a statewide commitment to improving early literacy outcomes. It ensures that all of our K-5 students receive evidence-based core instruction, and that students who do not meet benchmark receive targeted intervention, which is documented in a student reading plan. Families are partners in supporting reading development. It ensures that teachers and reading specialists receive required training grounded in the science of reading, and it ensures that divisions use approved curriculum, approved screeners, and aligned intervention methods. In short, the VLA establishes a consistent statewide foundation for high-quality literacy instruction, and it ensures early identification and immediate support, and promotes equitable, evidence-based instruction across all divisions. Implementation of the VLA began last year during the 2024-25 school year. For Norfolk Public Schools, the VLA strengthens the work that we already had underway in literacy and ensures that our practices are consistent across the division and grounded in what we know works for students. The VLA requires that we provide instruction aligned to the science of reading, that we use evidence-based practices consistently across all of our schools, and that we implement the instructional shifts that are outlined in the 2024 English Standards of Learning, which place a greater emphasis on foundational skills and regular engagement with complex grade-level tasks. It requires that we maintain ongoing professional learning for our teachers and reading specialists, that we partner closely with our families through those student reading plans, and that we align our curriculum, screening tools, and our intervention methods. Together, these components create a coherent system of instruction and support, and the VLA ensures that these shifts become a consistent experience for every student, and our work in MPS reflects that alignment. A key component of the Virginia Literacy Act is the requirement that any student in kindergarten through grade eight who demonstrates substantial reading deficiencies must receive intervention services. This is not optional. It's guaranteed support for every student who needs it. These intervention services must be evidence-based, data-driven, and targeted to the specific needs of the student and the skills that they have not yet mastered. In MPS, our reading specialists coordinate this work. They monitor progress, they develop and oversee student reading plans, and they collaborate with teachers, families, and families to support and ensure that the students receive timely, aligned, and effective support. This next slide outlines the intervention cycle that guides our work under the Virginia Literacy Act. It shows how we identify students who need support and how we ensure they receive instruction that matches those needs. The cycle begins with administering the vows screener, moves into analyzing the results, developing student reading plans with their families, implementing evidence-based interventions, and then monitoring progress and adjusting instruction as needed. You'll see this framework reflected in the slides that follow as we walk through each step a little more closely. This is how MPS puts the VLA requirements into daily practice for our students. So to identify students who need additional support, the VLA requires the use of a state-approved literacy screener. In Virginia, that tool is the Vows Assessment, or the Virginia Language Literacy Screening System. MPS administers vows to all kindergarten-through-grade-two students, selected grade-three students who show risk factors, and all students in grades four through eight who did not pass the reading SOL. This gives us early reliable data on foundational reading skills and helps us to act quickly when a student shows a sign of difficulty. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clark to walk us through the next step.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and I echo Lisa's sentiments regarding our appreciation for the opportunity to speak with you today. She shared background on the VLA and the vows screener, so now we're going to take a closer look at what the assessment actually measures and how those results guide instruction. For students in grades one through three... Whoops. Here we go. The vows assessment includes subtests that focus on the foundational skills that we know are essential for early reading success. These include phonemic awareness, phonics and decoding, word recognition, oral reading fluency, and basic comprehension. Each of these subtests allow us to pinpoint exactly where a student is progressing and where additional instruction might be needed. When results are shared with reading specialists, classroom teachers, and parents, they provide a clear picture of whether the student is developing the underlying skills necessary for strong reading development. This structured breakdown, rather than a single overall score, helps schools make timely, targeted decisions about intervention and instruction. For students in grades four through eight, the vows assessment shifts to the skills required for more advanced reading. These subtests include spelling, word reading, oral reading fluency, morphology, and text comprehension. As students move from learning to read to reading to learn, these components help us determine whether they can access grade-level content across subject areas. Just as with the early grades, results are reported in a way that allows educators and families to clearly see both strengths and areas for growth. The reporting structure highlights which skills are on track, which are developing, and which require intervention. This allows reading specialists to use the reports to tailor interventions, teachers to differentiate instruction in whole and small group settings, and families to support reading and literacy at home. In the folder we provided, and I see some of you already opened those up, you will find a copy of these two sample reports. Please take a moment to find those if you haven't already. Using the think, pair, share strategy, often used to facilitate discussion in our classrooms, and of course, designating whether you're going to be student A or B, we're going to briefly walk through that engagement protocol to analyze a data report. Please take a moment with your shoulder partner. Very quickly, you're going to be student A or B, okay? During the think portion, you are going to review the sample student A or B report, and we are asking you to think about the following questions. What skills appear to be the student's relative strengths? What growth opportunities do you see? And what is the most urgent priority need that should guide intervention? A moment to do the think part on your own.
A on the front, B on the back.
Okay, I got it.
I'm sorry. I should have been more explicit.
Does A look like? Yeah. They're good at alphabet knowledge.
Yep, so student A is on the front, student B on the back. And the three questions for the very brief initial reflection, please consider what skills are, might be the student's relative strengths, where are the growth opportunities, and what do you think that student's priority need might be? Give you a moment to consider. Mr. Calagero.
So, for student A, when it has oral reading fluency, passage one, it says eight and then NA, does that mean that it's coordinated, and it doesn't matter, or what does that mean?
I'm sorry, what? I was just, I wanted to give you a moment to experience how a parent might feel, and we're getting it, right? And we've got some notions about that. And what the reading specialists and teachers do to analyze this data. I just wanted to give you a moment to kind of get that. I'm going to walk you through what it says, trust me.
Yeah, because that's how many words per minute. You can't do that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. I got you.
And so do you score all the numbers up to come up with?
They do get a scaled score. And that scale score shifts each window that the vows is administered, but over time, you should see.
Versus you are reading to learn.
Right. I should already...
Report will designate where the scale score falls and within the bands of...
So you would add these up, and then you would scale it?
A psychometrician. It's really not totally putting it together.
Yeah, putting it together.
Not as cut and dry as it used to be.
But for this report, you can see that letter sounds, they've done very well.
Exactly.
That was admittedly brief. One more moment to put a pin in that conversation.
Yeah, I think a lot of kids...
And anything with these asterisks are things of indicators.
I see how that...
Which is odd, because they didn't hide it. Still not great.
All right, in the interest of time, we'll come together.
And this is what parents receive, so...
So I'm always looking for how the numbers move together. Thank you.
I want to highlight what both students' data begins to show us. First, both students do in fact demonstrate deficits in the foundational skill sets of spelling and word reading. These are essential building blocks for fluent and accurate reading, so identifying these gaps early is critical. This is in fact the answer to the third question I posed to you. What is the most urgent need that should guide intervention? It makes sense to focus on the intervention on, it makes sense to focus intervention on the lowest flagged skill set, since those are the skills upon which others are built. While these sample reports indicate specific deficits, the data also reveals some relative bright spots that help us better understand each student. For instance, student A shows a firm grasp of letter recognition and letter sound knowledge, which tells us the student has a solid foundation in early phonemic awareness. Student A also performed a little better when reading real words as compared to the nonsense words or the pseudo words, suggesting that familiarity with vocabulary is supporting some decoding. This is also true for student B. Student B performed a little better on the second fluency passage when compared to the first one. This may indicate increasing comfort with that particular text, because one is fiction and one is nonfiction, and perhaps some growing confidence as the assessment progressed. Now, that was admittedly brief for the sake of time, but that is a hint at the process that reading specialists and teachers go through as the vows data is reviewed. You want me to pause for a quick question? Yes, ma'am?
A quick question. And this might, this, once we have the VLA in place for a couple, a few years now, so one of the things that Ms. Nash and I were just talking about, that student A in first grade, you know, they have those foundational deficits. And then if you were to look back at this, you know, over how they're doing each year, and so now they're in grade four, and they're still having issues in those foundational deficits, then how does, as the educator of the school system, go back and then look at these reports over time and say, okay, well, what interventions took place, and how well did they work or not work? You know, so how does that fit into this plan? I guess the literacy...
One thing you'll notice on the report, that... Go ahead, yeah. High-risk history is noted, so that tells you, if we're looking at student A, two out of six reporting windows, this student has been identified.
Okay, so that's what that means.
So that is a flag to look at, and on the other one, we see four out of 11. So you can go back to look at, obviously, we don't, we don't have vows, but it also indicates risk, so it was house assessments as well. So if they have lots of times where they have been identified, then we want to dig deeper and do a data dive, treasure hunt, figure out what's been going on, realign our interventions.
Okay.
And I can, before I move on, I can give you just a very concrete example of that. So SIPs is typically an elementary, very early foundational, you know, intervention program. You know, we're looking at opportunities to put that in place, and in fact, at several of our middle schools, it's up and running. And so to that point of, okay, those things aren't working, so what are we doing? And so that's just one concrete example of a team at a school kind of doing a pivot and putting something in place to hopefully quicken the development of some of our most vulnerable students.
Clark, just to add to that as well, the reading plans. So this is our second year for reading plans for our early-grade students, our first year for students in grades four through eight. So those reading plans will also follow the child, so that also helps with that data tracking and identification along the way, which is a newer concept as well. So that's helping solidify the needs as it goes, so hopefully, as we go along and see this grade-one student, by the time that you get to grade four, these deficits will be gone because the focus is deeper in those areas.
Thank you. That's...
Thank you, sir. All right. So now that you've had a brief moment to review a sample vows report, let's look at how these results translate into that student reading plan. Great segue, Dr. Poe. Each component is directly shaped by the vows data and ensures targeted, individualized support for the student. As I provide an overview of each section of the reading plan with examples based on one of our sample vows students, you may want to reference the Division Overview and the 4-8 Student Reading Plan Guidance Documents that we included in your folder. We begin by identifying the student-specific reading skill deficits based on the vows subtest results similar to those we just reviewed. These areas may include decoding, fluency, vocabulary, or comprehension. Establishing these needs anchors the rest of the plan in evidence rather than guesswork. Next, we measure goals aligned with those, we set measurable goals aligned with those identified areas of needs. For our sample B student, for example, the reading goal might state, by the end of the school year, the student will be able to decode, that is to say, read, and encode, that is to say, spell, multi-syllabic words with common syllable patterns and affixes with at least 80% accuracy as measured by curriculum-based reading assessments. Instructional targets break the goal into smaller, skill-based steps so teachers can plan focused lessons and monitor progress effectively. The intervention plan section of the reading plan explains how the students will receive support. For this sample student, the plan might say, the student will receive evidence-based reading intervention through the SIPs curriculum, which provides systematic and explicit instruction in foundational reading skills. Intervention lessons will be provided five days a week for 30 minutes by the reading tutor. by the reading tutor or interventionist. This summary section also might indicate that the student will work on Lexia Core 5 for 20 minutes per day in the classroom. These details help teachers, parents, and students visualize what daily intervention actually looks like, intentional, structured, and consistent. Moving to the progress monitoring portion of the plan, progress monitoring ensures that we can see whether the intervention is working and make instructional adjustments as needed. For example, in this student's plan, it would say, student progress will be monitored using the SIPs mastery test. These checks will take place every two to four weeks or every five to 10 lessons, depending on pacing. Results will be used to measure growth in foundational reading skills and guide next steps in instruction. Again, this regular data collection allows instruction to remain responsive and targeted. The final section of the reading plan outlines the tools families can use at home to reinforce growth. In addition to school-provided activities and resources, Lexia and Virginia Literacy Partnership's websites offer a wealth of parent-friendly materials, such as practice routines, skill explanations, videos, printable activities, and guidance for supporting foundational reading skills. These resources empower parents and caregivers with concrete ways to reinforce the skills being addressed at school and help their children be more confident readers in any number of settings. Together, these five components create a reading plan that is individualized and data-driven, ensuring every student receives the focused support required under the VLA. Lisa's gonna return to discuss implementation of the SRPs and instructional best practices.
All right. So, as we move into the next steps of the intervention cycle, the VLA requires that all reading interventions provided to students must be evidence-based and approved by the Virginia Department of Education. This requirement is grounded in decades of research showing that children are not born wired to read. They must be taught explicitly and systematically. Evidence-based intervention means instruction is structured, research-driven, and responsive to the data gathered through the student reading plan. Our Division Literacy Plan outlines the VDOE-approved intervention programs used in Norfolk Public Schools, including SIPs and Lexia. These programs provide systematic, research-aligned instruction that helps students build foundational skills and accelerate their progress. Across the Division, we ensure that intervention providers implement these programs with consistency and fidelity so that every student receives high-quality, targeted support aligned with the expectations of the VLA. Once evidence-based interventions are in place, the next essential step in the cycle is monitoring student progress and making adjustments when needed. Under the VLA, every student reading plan is overseen by our reading specialists and instructional leadership teams. This ensures that decisions about instruction are consistent, collaborative, and grounded in data. When we review progress monitoring data, we look for clear indicators of whether the intervention is working. If a student is making adequate progress, we continue the current intervention and monitor, continue monitoring until all goals are met. If a student meets a goal early, we reinforce that skill and adjust the plan to reflect the student's new instructional needs. If a student is not showing adequate progress, the SRP team meets to determine what changes are needed. That might include increasing frequency, adjusting group size, or shifting to a different skill within our approved intervention program. Each adjustment, along with its rationale, is documented in the student reading plan. By reviewing plans collaboratively during grade-level planning times and data team meetings, we ensure that support remains aligned, responsive, and focused on helping each student meet their reading goals. As we close, it's important to step back and look at the full picture of literacy in Norfolk Public Schools. The VLA has strengthened our intervention systems, but intervention is only one part of our approach. Our goal is twofold. High-quality, aligned, tier-one instruction for all of our students and targeted and evidence-based intervention for students who need additional support. With these two pieces working together, we ensure that every student has the opportunities to succeed. This is how we advance the board's commitment to equity and excellence for all. Before we take questions, we wanted to take a moment to recognize the vital role that our reading specialists play in working with our families, teachers, and students to make literacy an attainable goal for every child. Norfolk Public School is fortunate to have the most dedicated and knowledgeable reading specialist in the state. And their steadfast commitment to our vision has been essential to a smooth implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act across our schools. Thank you for your time and attention, and we are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Moore, Buffalo.
Thank you again, always a great presentation. Just have one question. In the cycle, align intervention methods, the development of the student reading plans with families? If that's not the case, what happens?
Okay, so, we have to by law invite parents to participate, right? So, we send out multiple forms of communication to invite that participation. It could be via Zoom, via phone call, or it could even be a written comment. And if they choose not to be involved with them, that's fine. We move forward with our data dive and going forth with the intervention.
So, I had a similar question, if I could just piggyback on that since we're on it. So, when you're working with the family, do the families get this report as well? Like, does this go home? So, they can all, so they do get a copy of that, okay.
They get any documentation explaining it?
Yes, they get a copy of the student reading plan.
Okay, so they.
Print out a copy.
You print out a copy for the parent, and then they get this report as well?
Correct.
With an explanation of what is, or like a highlights page?
Yeah, so the VA Connects is the website that houses the VOWS assessment, and they've really done a great job of creating one-pagers that translates those reports and explains what all the information, what a scale score is, what this means for my child. And our reading specialists have access to those and always include those in those packets.
Okay, all right. And then, I have a few other questions related specifically, like if we could go to slide 14, where you have the HQIM and plus aligned evidence-based interventions equals equity. Yeah, that slide. So, do we have? So, I know high-quality instructional materials and aligned tier-one instruction. And we know that high-quality instruction is probably the most school-based factor that leads to improvement, improving outcomes for students. So, in our schools where we have higher percentages of provisionally licensed teachers or associate teachers, do we have dedicated reading specialists that are solely assigned for those schools?
All of our schools have a reading specialist.
But are we waiting those schools that may have a higher percentage with additional reading specialist support, or?
Let me jump in on that as well. So, a couple of things. One, with our instructional coaches, we place them with where the highest needs are, whether it be staffing or student data. So, that gives more assistance to those schools. And then, both Mr. Clark and Ms. Nash have specialists, and those specialists work more at those schools where there are higher rates of non-certified teachers in the schools to be able to give more support in those schools. So, we do tier our support. So, it's, they're not, they don't visit every single school the equal amount of time. They base their time based off of need, of teacher need and student data need.
Okay. And so, my next question, and are there areas where we could be doing better or providing more stronger supports and?
Absolutely. I mean, so, I think one of the things we talked about at the legislative luncheon was when the VLA came into effect, and the VLA is powerful. It's great legislation, it really focuses on literacy. But what the VLA did is it shifted the role of our reading specialists from being in the classrooms and coaching and doing instructional practice the great majority of their time to now the majority of their time is student reading plans and following the data, which is equally as important, but we get a little bit of a loss of that support. So, as we go through the consolidation plan, the goal is to not lose any reading specialists, even through attrition, to keep the positions and to be able to double up where we need them more. Because we'll have that ability to do it because we won't be spread so thin anymore.
Okay, yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up because I was thinking about that with the documentation of the reading plan development and monitoring and all of that that goes and adjusting and all of that that goes into, yeah, a meeting with parents, all of that, and the time that that takes. And so, that's why I was asking specifically about that, especially in our schools that have higher percentages of non-certified teachers. So, I appreciate that, thank you. So, can you?
All right, can I let somebody else ask a question?
No, this is another question, but you can come out.
Great question. So, with built-in, within our intervention curriculum, there are progress monitoring tools. So, typically, it's every four to six weeks, but depending on the assessment, the pacing of that intervention. But then, we also reassess with the VOWS. We'll have a mid-year VOWS assessment window to do apples to apples. And then, again, in the spring for our K through three students. Four through eight will take the SOEL test, so they won't take the VOWS in the spring.
And how, how long is it taking us to see progress?
Well, it depends on the student.
But I mean, average?
Well, we just started with the VOWS assessment. This is only our second year, this year, with the VOWS assessment. So, we're already seeing a reduction in the number of reading plans that we had last year in K-3-3 as compared to this year. So, that is a piece of measurable progress.
Thank you.
And just to add on, just in between those incremental measures, one of the nice things about Lexia is real-time data. So, teachers have gotten PD and they're really solid on doing weekly and even daily so that they're making adjustments, you know, as they're. We're not waiting six weeks.
Okay.
You know, it's real time often.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I did, and that was actually a good segue into another question I had, and this is probably more board level. So, I mean, normally, and I was hoping we would have been doing our progress monitoring of our literacy goals, the board's literacy goals. And so, just looking at where we are with our data, I know the reading, when we've looked at it in the past, and we looked at strategies that work or not working, you know, the reading plans were, seemed to be a strong strategy that was coming up consistently. So, that was a question that I was gonna ask was, how are we, how are we at the board level going to know that these interventions that are, that are taking place as a result of, you know, the alignment with the VLA moving the needle for our students? Like, we are seeing that movement toward improving progress or, you know, reaching the outcomes to the targets that we've set in our goals. And how, you know, we have that at the board level, but how does that translate down into those reading plans? Because I know the reading plans are specific to that student and what these reports show, but then, you know, kind of connecting that to the goal, you know, for the school and then, you know, for the district, like, how can you, like, speak to that a little bit?
So, I'll speak to that. You know, I think the reading plans become the base, right? Where we're giving that individualized instruction, we're focusing on the specific needs each student has. That then in turn goes to the building level scores and goals that are then tied to the division level and board level goals. So, all of it is interconnected. So, you know, really, ultimately, as a board for the board level, when we do the data updates is where you see what, you know, how we're progressing. At the administrative level, we look at the nitty-gritty and say, what specific resources are useful and are advantageous for our students? And then, at the board level, you see that at budgeting time because we're gonna ask for what we need that supports our students, and then we're gonna sunset what doesn't support our students. So, that, I mean, that really, when you think board level, we think that high level. And so, you'll see it on our progress monitoring, and then you'll see it in the budget requests of, you know, continued use of Lexia because we're seeing positive use in Lexia. You know, continued, you know, continuation of the reading specialist positions even though we're consolidating schools because we know we need more help in that area. That's where you'll see the differences in, of what our needs are and how it's impacting student growth.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I also wanted to hear more specifically about how the VLA is being used specifically for students with disabilities and our L students. And if, you know, having an IEP, how the IEP is formed to, based on what is required by the VLA? And if you could speak to?
There's a large percentage of our students who have SRPs, student reading plans, that also are cross-categorized. They have IEPs or are categorized as L. So, it's really a collaborative process when we're creating those SRPs. If a student has an IEP, the first thing we want to do is to see, are the IEP goals aligned with what the SRP states? And if it is a decoding deficit, then we can make decisions as to who's gonna provide that level of intervention. And it can count towards their IEP goals. And the same thing for our L population. A lot of the L students, of course, are gonna have decoding deficits, but they also have large language deficits as well. So, they're gonna get multi-points of intervention from their L teacher and the intervention provider to hit those specific decoding deficits.
I just gave, just again, another concrete example. I was at one of our middle schools and gave PD to a recently hired Title I teacher who's supporting in a resource block and also in an ELA class. And so, we're talking about opportunities for potential. Who's, who is allocated to that school? But then also, that Title I teacher during that resource block that the student has, can weave it in there to. Intervention, not two different things going on, but rather one very intentional focus for that student, but the opportunity for multiple settings.
So, especially for our ELA student, like the screener, how is that administered for a student? Is it with the assistance of an ELA?
We're assessing specifically their ability to read English and progress in that, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's required, right, Ms. Nash?
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, there is a Spanish version of the VOWS, but you would only use that in specific examples if you wanted to assess in their home tongue if there are some decoding issues, to see if there's more going on and to triangulate that data. But that has to go through an approval process, and you have to have an interpreter to deliver it.
Okay, and what is, like, how, how is that? Is that quite a cumbersome process to do that? I mean, like.
Just to get the resources. And it just, you know, every situation is different, and that would be a really unique scenario where you would want to dig that deep.
Okay, all right, I was just curious.
Now, that's it for me. Any questions?
Thank you.
Very enlightening. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.02, the School Resource Officer Memorum of Understanding Conversation/Discussion with Mr..
Good afternoon, Chair DeColle Jarrow, Vice Chair Thomas, Board Members, Dr. Poehl. So, we're gonna, I'm gonna present to you information regarding School Resource Officer Program on evaluation that is required by Virginia Code and discuss next steps as far as the MOU that is, would be required to continue the program. So the scope of our. Scope of our evaluation, we got information from six schools that contain SROs currently, and that's Booker T. Washington High School, Granby High School, Lake Taylor High School, Maury High School, Norview High School, and Ruffner. Right now, there are six school resource officers that are assigned to Norfolk Public Schools full-time. And they're assigned to these schools. They were assigned there last year, for the majority of last year, and so far this year. What we used to evaluate the SROs was information that was contained in our synergy regarding discipline, the current MOU, the proposed MOU, which I believe you have a copy of that was with your information, and the school climate survey that was conducted at the end of last school year, our evaluation instrument and survey results of individuals that were surveyed through those particular schools. Across every school that we evaluated, there was consistent strengths in the SRO program. One was visibility, accessibility for both school personnel, students. They were evaluated very high as being professional, good communication with our staff, being very knowledgeable of both what goes on in the school, the community, the law, and their judgment in dealing with students and dealing with issues as it comes to the school. They also received high marks as far as organization and their activities and overall impact that they had on the school. Were asked questions in the survey that dealt with how well the impact of their presence in the school had on issues that could affect Norfolk Public Schools. And these are issues that relate to vaping, assaults, weapons, sex offenses, vandalism threats, and gang-related activities. And out of these, all of these gained high marks, the lowest mark being their impact on vaping. And that was at about 64%. And these are just, again, observations made by the staff and individuals that were in the school. Some of the comments that the principals of these schools made specifically were very appreciative of the SROs. One principal in particular stated that the SRO that was in their building is the best one that they've seen since they've been in school administration. They received high praise for the relationships that they build with the students and the staff. Some of the key takeaways that we see in the program is that it has a very high approval rating, about 89%. Out of the respondents of the survey, only about 6% disapprove of it. And the biggest thing I can tell you is that there were a couple of people who may have expressed philosophical differences with putting a police officer in a school, but the disapproval was not because of activities by the officers themselves. Biggest majority of them would like to see the program expanded. Several people mentioned that it should be throughout more schools. SROs only represent a portion of individuals that are in the schools that provide security for the school staff and for the school, those individuals in the schools. Right now, currently, at Norfolk Public Schools, there are school security officers assigned to every school that has sixth-grade students and above. There is a school security officer that is assigned to one elementary school, and that is due to things that occur in the neighborhood. And we assigned a school, a school security officer to that school as well. So for our next steps, what I recommend is that we continue our partnership with Norfolk Police Department. And right now, again, they're providing school resource officers in our secondary schools. Because of their staffing, it would not be, they were not in a position to expand the program, but that gives us an opportunity to pursue partnerships with Norfolk Sheriff's Office. We have had preliminary discussions with them, and this is something that is possible. There, of course, would have to be certain things that would occur before it could happen, but it is possible. And then the other thing that we do is continue to provide professional development for both the administrators and the SROs, and this is something that is required by state code. So at this point, I'd take any questions or if there's any discussion, if anybody has any questions of me.
I just want to say thank you. I was in that elementary school you're talking about about two weeks ago, and I was very happy to see that. And I just want to say you and your staff is doing a wonderful job, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. So the, of the six school, all the six schools that are listed here are staffed with SRO?
Yes, they're staffed with Norfolk Police Officers full-time as SROs.
Right. And so moving forward, there's talks of partnership with the Sheriff's Office so we can staff them in the middle schools?
It would be middle schools and additional schools that we may deem that could benefit from it.
Because at some point, at one time, all the middle schools were, were staffed with the SRO officer.
Right, that is correct.
So I don't know if.
So in, in, you know, past years, the MOU still states 19, I believe.
That's correct.
It does state 19, yes.
For our, for, in the MOU and for the past few years, with the difficulty the Norfolk Police Department has had with staffing, they haven't been able to provide the SROs. But we still pursued to keep it at 19 so that we have the possibility, if staffing does improve, that we can get SROs. However, Mr. Hughes has been working and reaching out to the Sheriff's Department to say, well, if we can't get the Police Department, maybe some sheriff's deputies can fill in that role as well.
And just looking into the future, do, does Norfolk see having security officers in all of our elementary schools?
I would love to. Budgetarily, I don't know if it's attainable in the near future, but I would love to have one in each of our elementary schools. In fact, when I met with the elementary school principals about budgeting, that was one of their requests, was a, was a security officer at the elementary level.
I have a question. Do any of these SROs have any training or receive any training in mental health, working with children who have mental health issues and specifically working with children?
So part of the curriculum for the SRO training, there is a portion of that that is dedicated to mental health training and working with juveniles with mental health challenges. That is, that training for the SROs is specifically for them. And part of our, the MOU states that within six months, either the SRO, once they are assigned to a school, or within six months of being assigned to a school, they will complete the program through Department of Criminal Justice Services for an SRO, and that is part of the curriculum for it.
Okay, thank you.
Colonel? Did you have anything to say, Dr.?
I was just going to add, and just Mr. Hughes to clarify, in order to be a school resource officer, you have to go through specialized training. You can't just be a Norfolk Police Officer and be put into a school. There is specific training for it, yes.
Thank you.
SRO limited to sworn officers only?
Yes.
Okay.
At this point, they have to be a sworn officer and they're employed by the city of Norfolk. There are other, we, there is a, the ability to be able, for the school system, to hire former police officers, but they're not considered SROs. It is a different position, very similar to the school security officer.
So I have, I have a few questions. First, if we could go back, could you speak to exactly who the respondents are in the survey results?
So the survey, we did surveys in those six schools. We surveyed, number one, the principals, administrative staff, instructional staff, and students.
So, so that, that graph on the third, yeah, so that is indicative of everybody?
Of everybody, yes.
Okay, so did you look specifically at, you know, how principals, how staff responded versus how students responded? Because that's something I would be really interested to, to know how students responded to having SROs in the building.
Part of what we did, the surveys were blind.
Right.
So we did not, we did not separate them out except for the principals. But the staff and the students, they were in together.
How big is your sample?
I don't have the exact number, but we, we got about, on average, about 40 or 50 folks from each school. But I don't have the specific.
That's, that's fine.
So that's a small, yeah, segment of, so this is, this is, you know, and I, I know I asked questions when we went over the climate survey about, about some of these things that I know weren't really captured in that piece. But that is something that I think moving forward, and I probably said it the last time we reviewed the, the MOU, about really trying to capture that information because it's really important. I know some are philosophically in alignment with having an SRO in every building and maybe multiple SROs in every building, where I'm more of having the behavioral and mental health supports in, in buildings so that, because that's really at the root of what is transpiring, right? So I would like to know, rather than having a more carceral environment, having a nourishing, a nurturing environment, a learning environment, you know, that, than one that is, you know, where I've heard oftentimes from students that it's, you know, prison-like versus being a real student-centered academic environment. So that's what my hope for the vis, for the future is not to have more officers in every building, but more of the mental health and behavioral supports in, in our buildings. And so I'd like to know more about the thoughts, feelings, attitudes of our students and staff and principals. And I understand the need for it right now, you know? I'm not saying, you know, remove them all. I believe in looking at the need and, and making decisions based on that. But that is like my overall hope for the future is that we have these other additional supports in our budget and in the more supportive resources for our students versus the officers. The other thing is, so I'd like to know more about respondents and anytime we get information like this, data like this, that it be separated into those categories so we know how, how many respondents and, you know, broken out by demographic groups.
I'd like to know, like, what percentage were students? You know, like, it's hard to just go by what, like, the principals were, because what are their six?
It's only six. And that's why they're separated out separately. Because we had a specific instrument that we used with the principals, and we had separate conversations with the principals. The principals' responses are not included in those numbers. They had, like I said, very specific things that we dealt with as principals.
But I think it's important to know what the staff is thinking versus what the.
Correct, correct. And I think SROs make adults feel safer, but they don't necessarily make students feel safer. But.
We've got two suits and sitting here.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's, exactly, and I, you know.
As a student, I go to Norview, I feel that having the officers there definitely make me feel more safe. But to what Ms. Pessine was saying, I do agree that it's also like mental health. I feel like if there were more mental health people as well, like, we could, it would be very, very helpful. Like, today we had a hall sweep, and of course, there was like a lot of officers, and there was a lot of yelling, telling people to get to their classes and everything, and a lot of students were getting frustrated. And I feel like even though everyone was in their classes, I just feel like, again, it's all about like the mental aspect and how kids are treated at home. That root problem, as well as having security, because, again, it's very important. A lot of my other peers, I think it's just.
Hearing that, and want to add to that, I'd love to.
I mean, yeah, I think they're definitely necessary because, I mean, there was two fights in Granby today, and like, if the security officers or the SRO wasn't there, like, it would have gotten a lot worse. But I do think it can feel prison-like sometimes. If around every corner, there's another security guard, and then there's gates in front of the bathrooms, and you can't leave your class 15 minutes before or 15 minutes at the end. So like, I feel like you have to find the balance, because if you just adding more guards, like, students are just going to keep retaliating. They don't, the ones that are causing problems don't like the guards. So if you keep adding more, it's just kind of, it does feel like a prison.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, so, I'm so grateful that we have students at the table to, to share that. And so, yeah, I mean, I oftentimes hear it from students and, but you're sitting here, and I appreciate you both sharing that perspective. So, and I'd like to hear more of that in whatever way we do it, through our student advisory groups, through, you know, just how, how do we make safer environments that are also nurturing environments? But I also want to know how our SROs, because I know in our MOU, it's, there's a distinction made between, you know, whose responsibility it is, their responsibility is to assess criminal threats, right?
That's.
And not necessarily upholding our regular policies and all of that, you know? So in terms of how they feel they are being used, I'd also like to know how the, feedback from the SRO. Like, what are things that they see that are needed that they are not necessarily needed for, but are being, like, how are they being pulled in to tasks and responsibilities by principals or the staff that they necessarily, that aren't maybe, you know, aren't congruent with the MOU?
Well.
And you might have some information about that already.
And I do. So I, the SROs fall under one particular captain, one particular unit in the Police Department. And I think we probably, with that captain we speak, I know it at least two or three times a week. In addition to that, we meet specifically regularly with that unit, and we listen to issues. Most of the SROs, they know their, their role, they learn their role, and that's part of the training that we do. And it's training that's required for both the SRO and the administrator from the school. So the principals get training specifically for the SRO program. And that, again, that's required by state code. And it sets out a very clear line of what the MO, I mean, what the SRO's responsibilities are compared to what school officials' responsibilities are. The SROs are not involved in student discipline. They are, like you said, they are involved in what could be considered criminal activity. They will come and assist if there's a disturbance, if there's a fight. But in the majority of cases, unless it gets to the point where the school security officer or school staff can't handle it, then that's when they would step in. It's, it's not that they would be the very first person to do anything. The majority of my interaction with the SROs, again, it has focused on criminal activity and, and those things. They call me regularly, I call them regularly. And so it's not a lot of overreach, and I think Norfolk has participated in the program long enough that if there was overreach at some point in time, those things have gone away because they've learned. Five out of the six SROs have more than, more than seven years as an SRO with that experience. We only have one new SRO, and he's actually a former Norfolk Public School student who has gone and he's, you know, now functions as the SRO. And he got extremely high marks. And his mark, his rating from students, anecdotally, I can tell you, was very high. Because he is young and he can relate to them, and that's why I thought he was a good addition to the program.
Right, that's good to hear. Right, that's good to hear. But I, I guess I'm also specifically wanting to know how the SROs, like, is there, is there, is there any mechanism in place to get feedback from them? So, you're saying, under this unit, they come back and they can bring what they feel like are big issues?
Yes.
And that's how you do it?
They can, they, they, the majority of it will go to the police department, go to their, their CO, but they can also call me. And like I said, we have a good relationship and we, you know, we speak to them and we talk to them all the time.
I'd like to add too, and that's also why there's a requirement every two years to revisit the MOU. So, if there are things that aren't working, it's a joint effort between the, the public schools and the city. So, that's also opportunity for feedback from the Norfolk Police Department on this is or is not working in the MOU.
Okay. So, because there are no changes to the MOU, we're assuming everything is working as it, as stated in the MOU? So, that's, okay, so that's.
There are, there are some changes to the MOU to fit in with state code and the model MOU that DCJS puts out. But as far as just the, the specifics of how we do things, there are no changes.
There are no major changes, yes, okay. All right, that's helpful to know. Okay, and then, how, can you, can you review with us real quick? How is determine how many SROs, like, right now, we have one per building, right? Like, how are, how do we determine, based on need, how many we need? Like, so, whether it's SROs or SSOs? Because I know we have the SROs, but we also have the school's security officers, which are different.
The SROs, they are assigned, right now, originally, they were assigned to secondary schools, middle and high schools. But because of their shortages, they came out of those schools. So, the number that we have are just based on availability from the police department.
Okay.
And with the six, it's, you know, more important, I believe, to put them in high school, they, we get the biggest return on our investment of using them in the high schools. And the other was put in Ruffner, again, because we thought we would get a good return on utilizing that individual in Ruffner. The school's security officers, they are our employees and they fall under me. So, the way I determine how we put them in the particular schools, I use a matrix and I go by, I use a lot of different factors. I look at the size of the student body, I look at the size of the building itself, the number of entrances in the building. I also get discipline data from synergy and I look at the number of overall incidents that occurred in the school. And I review that quarterly and I look at it. And I also, in addition to the overall incidents, I look at the type of incidents. And so, if there are, you know, what, what I would consider violent incident or serious incident, that may carry more weight than just several incidents of maybe, you know, disrespectful behavior or whatever. And so, I look at the overall number of incidents and then the type of incidents. And I kind of use a matrix and a little bit of a formula and it gives me an idea of the number of officers I should have in there. Right now, we employ sixty-nine full-time officers and we have six zone supervisors that, you know, kind of help take care of it because it is, you know, going from school to school and dealing with them, it takes a little bit of extra. And between those, we're able to respond to any calls or any, any instances that may happen. And it also gives us the ability to move people around if, you know, something changes out of school.
I just wanted to say, it's very necessary that we have the officers in the schools and I appreciate that. Ten years, coming ten years from our Norfolk Public Schools, I know firsthand, without some of the officers, we wouldn't know what to do. And in certain cases, I know we have our mental issues, but some of our babies also have behavior, serious behavior issues, and that's something, you know, regular staff can't handle. So, having security is wonderful. And one day in the budget, if we can have all security in all our schools, I will push it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to agenda item four point zero one, the CIP Window Replacement Fund reprogramming.
Thanks, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Really no formal presentation on this, and Mr. Fraley's here to assist with any questions we may have. He is not feeling well, so I told him I would take the speaking part right now. The, a, a few years ago in the CIP, we had window replacement projects already funded. So, these are fully funded projects. However, five of the schools listed on there are due, they're on the consolidation list. So, clearly, we don't want to invest more finances into those schools. And the, as we all know, costs have gone up. And as almost luck would have it, in the process of, of getting the, the bidding done for the window replacements to be done this summer, if we use the funding from those five schools that are on the consolidation list, we are within eighteen thousand dollars of fully funding the window projects that were slated to be done. So, we just wanted to bring to the board, since it was voted on as a CIP project with those schools on the list, that consideration to just, really, we have the funding, transfer the funding from those five schools into the remaining schools to be able to do the window replacements this summer. On those schools, we're coming now kind of on an off-cycle. It's, it's not budget time, we're, of course, developing budget, but it's not budget voting time right now. Wanted to have that done sooner than later so we can get bids out for the projects. So, we wanted to bring it to a work session in case there were questions, so that we just didn't throw it on a business meeting agenda for vote. So, that's the whole purpose for today. So, Mr. Fraley and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions?
So, the five schools that are being asked to move funds are, obviously, Willoughby, Berkeley Campus Stella, NTC, PB Young, and Ghent.
Correct, they're in red, I believe.
Yes, they're in red. And so, my question is, so, for some of those schools that are down the road, though, which I know could change based on the redistricting work or, you know, decisions that the board makes, you know, could change, or it could accelerate the, the closure process. But in the meantime, right now, based on the, the time that we have, are, is the current state of the windows and doors in, in a safe, you know, cool, dry, and warm? You know, are we able to provide all of those things for the years that they are still going to be active before closure? So, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, that's a great question, Ms. Pessine. And yes, they are, and any repairs that would need to be made, we'll stay up on the repairs to make sure they are. But the, you know, the full window replacements is really a, a, a huge upgrade to a school. So, they are in usable fashion and keeping the wind and rain out. And if there are repairs needed, we'll do those repairs along the way to keep the schools in a, in a usable fashion.
So, we will have the funds to do those repairs.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Right, right, okay. Well, I, I just wanted to hear and ask that question that, for the years that they are, that we will have the funds to repair what needs to be repaired.
Yes, we will.
Along the way, so, just wanted to. And that was really.
Colonel.
Are there any of those replacements that are ongoing now that are carryovers from last year or previous years that haven't been done?
The, the documents that I gave to Dr. Poehl that were posted are, there's a primary document in there that lists all the CIP projects that have been funded since twenty-one, twenty-two, that were not completed. The way you can read it, so you know exactly what year. If you look at the GL line, at the end of the GL line, it says twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. That's the funding year. So, what, the reason some of these window projects were, were held up was because we had a three-year cycle for ESSR. And as you guys approved, we did seventeen major ESSR upgrades and nine minor ones. Sorry, y'all. And, and they had to be done in thirty-six months. And there was no way we could do HVAC in windows at the same time in a building. It just, you, too many people working, you can't do it. So, we had to make the decision to push all the window projects after the roofs and after the HVAC. So, what you'll see on there is, they are, they have been funded for, since twenty-two, some of them. I believe that was your question.
Right, they're funded, but they're, they're not completed.
No, none of the window projects that are highlighted in gold have been started.
I have, this is what I printed off.
Okay.
And it's, and it's not the same thing that you're talking about.
All right.
I, I, I get it.
Yeah, I'd be glad to give you my copy.
Oh, no, I can get it here. I just didn't.
Yes, sir.
I got this, and so, I'm just making, trying to make sure that, that those ones, and I can't remember which school it was, it said, oh, yeah, we're going to do it. Then it didn't happen and all the windows are hanging around.
The windows, no, any one that was tabled was tabled because of ESSR and none of the materials have been ordered. The only materials that might have been ordered are the newest ones that have been awarded. But there's no windows laying around in any of our warehouses, I assure you.
Warehouses do you have?
Just one big one.
And there's a lot in there, too, by the way.
Yes, there is. It's a big warehouse.
Other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Now, move on to our final agenda item, four point zero two. Our agenda items.
Mr. Dr. Martin.
I was just thinking about some of the professional development that we go through as a board. And now that we have some newer members, that we, I'd like to propose that we focus, oh, and also, that we are, have been self-proclaimed as a data-driven board, that, that we explore some opportunities for data analysis training. And I think that that could help us have to more productive conversations around our data. And that might mean all of us sitting in one class or sitting in different classes. And Dr. Poehl, I'd really love to hear recommend, not right now, but like, at some point, I'd like to hear if you had any recommendations.
There used to be a web, a webinar for board members called The Data Made Me Do It. So, and then, and even with the Student Outcomes Focus Governance, they teach you, you know, when you're goal-setting, how to progress monitor, all of that comes with that. But I agree, and that was a topic I had as well, so I don't know if you're done. No, well, not, not necessarily.
I'm teasing.
She's always teasing me about that. But really around governance training, but I don't know if you're done.
Well, I was also going to, I don't, I guess I will ask you, Dr. Poehl, to what degree is, are you all using AI in your data analysis? And, because I'd like to mimic what you all are doing so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've, we've jumped in with AI this year. So, I mean, it, it, we use ChatGPT, we have a, a contract with them, and we use Magic School with the teachers. And there's an expectation that we do data analysis with AI to help with it, not as the only analysis, but to assist with the work that we're doing. So, I mean, that's something that's very plausible that we could integrate into the data analysis training for the board as well.
So, I want to echo what Dr. Martin just said and focus really at mine was more broadly to bring back the governance training topic, because that's come up in our future agenda items, but really, and of course, the board's self-evaluation. You posed several dates for us to.
I gave several dates that didn't work for the month of December. I've been in contact with them, was hoping for dates today, calendars, but they haven't gotten.
Right, and then, it would, I don't know if there are already plans, if, in agenda planning, you made plans for this already, but just an update of, and it doesn't have to be an agenda for a board meeting, but just an update, a little more expansive than what we've gotten in the weekly bulletins about where we are with the school consolidation, closure timelines, and progress that's being made there, especially for the schools that are going to be impacted in this next school year.
And we have that on the December seventeenth agenda already.
Oh, you do?
It's in the draft agendas folder.
Okay, great, great. And then, finally, so, you know, I wanted to hear what our student, school board reps are working on, what we can, you know, what, what the plans are and just better, how to better incorporate. I thought today's segue into our conversation discussion was fantastic, and I'd like to see us have, you know, a better cadence around inviting their voice during our discussions. And so, it's not really an agenda item unless it's something that we have to look at through policy. But it's just, I'd like, in your agenda plan, like, you know, kind of really formulating a more structured way of getting student voice and student participation in our meetings. So, I just wanted to pose that for agenda planning.
Um, I just want to add to that, since Athena and I went to the workshop in Williamsburg and spoke to other, like, representatives and stuff, we found that they kind of had more of a, like, time to speak or to ask questions or anything like that. And also, they kind of had a, I guess, like, document or anything like that, kind of detailing, like, what exactly they are, like, they're supposed to be doing. Because I just feel like we kind of were not sure exactly what we're supposed to be. Our goal was today to kind of.
Would it be appropriate to have them give a monthly?
Absolutely.
A lot of the other.
A lot of school reps, student reps do that.
The board in agreement.
And, and I'd love to hear, like, I, thank you for bringing that up. They went to the, the student workshop at VSBA's conference a few weeks ago, a couple weeks ago. And if there are ideas, you know, that they can share with us about how we can do this better, I mean, who better to give them to us than, than them? You know, I'd like to hear about that, so.
Why don't we plan for the new year to have them? That's, you know.
Format, what that looks like and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Necessary, like, what exactly should be included in the update?
Well, I mean, it's sort of driven, I guess it's going to be driven by what is going on in the schools.
Right, yeah. And, and perhaps, you know, you two could collaborate on what that, with Dr. Poehl, you know, and your team, like, what that might look like and kind of give guidance to them and then.
Yeah, and Dr. Hillyen Sullivan is a, you know, a, a kind of a mentor for it. So, we'll, we'll work on that and have a, you know, we'll start it and by trial and error, just like everything else, we'll improve it as we go along. But I think hearing student voice at the board meetings is absolutely acceptable.
Great.
I guess, question. For the Policy Committee, and this is a question, how do we, other than legislation coming down and those kind of things, how we tackle our, our policies? Is that the only way we look at a policy? Or do we, like, look, because I was looking through our policy book, the eight chapters, and just kind of glancing. Has there ever been a time we went chapter by chapter to review every policy that we have in our book and just having some kind of cycle?
Well, that's where, that's where the policy committee first came into being.
Well, that's where my question comes from.
And then, so now I think we're at a point where, you know, a lot of things have been cleaned up, outdated policies have been removed, and you could probably speak more to that.
Yeah, so over the past year, because it's not, it's not an easy task. Actually, it was the 24, 25 school year, I worked closely with a couple of people to look at all the policies, read through them, created a spreadsheet with expiration dates. Because all the policies that we share with VSBA, every five years, we get updates on those. But any Norfolk policy, if we don't have our own cycle, that's not getting renewed.
That's what I'm asking.
So I've created that now, so that we're in a, we're in a spot now where we can, we have the ability to start doing that, to start reviewing our policies. And then also, if there's a policy that board members, you know, have concern or want to see changed, that's a conversation we can have, and it can be taken to the board policy committee and have discussion before it comes to the full board. So like internally, administratively, if there's a change, whether it's legislative change or there's a reason for a change, then we can work on that policy change. The school board rep policy right now is in my folder right now, because the last time we brought it, we talked about, or at the policy review committee, we brought it up, and we talked about wanting to make it more Norfolk-centric instead of VSBA-centric. So, you know, those are in the process.
If you look on each of the policies, there's a date for when it was reviewed.
Well, that's, I didn't know if we had a system like.
We've grown into one.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Yes.
Sure.
I'll talk a little bit about the efficiency of our meeting time and making it what I think would be a little better. We spend a lot of time with some presentations that are almost read to us. And I think that we, as responsible members, we can develop our questions and come in. The individual giving it the presentation could say, here's some highlights, here's some changes. Are there any questions? And we can ask it, instead of 15 minutes, whatever the time is, going slide by slide. But then the challenge comes in with that is, how do we make sure that the public knows what changes have been made? And do they actually have access to some of the data that we have that we're looking at?
Do, but I, because anything that's in the public domain is still on the agenda. My concern is that I feel that that time, this is my personal opinion, that that time is used not just to inform us, but to inform the public who might be in the audience or streaming, because I do hear from a lot of people who do stream the school board meetings. So it's a time to help educate our community, so I hate to, yes, sometimes it does take a long time. I get all of those things, but even when I've read the documents in advance, too, I still always glean some benefit from having it gone through. So I see it as a too-poor thing, making sure I understand the material and making sure our public is being educated.
That was my intent, is to cause the dialogue, because I think it's a good idea, but then how do you make sure that the public gets it was the second part of that? And the point is that that's how some of them get the information, the public that's watching, is to sit here and have an explanation for it instead of them having a question that they don't know how to ask it, because we're in the middle of a meeting, so. That's, I think, what you've said is a better way, is to, I mean, we've been doing it, so, and it's been successful.
I understand the efficiency part, wanting to use our time efficiently. So any other thoughts? Other items from the floor?
The one, okay. I noticed, well, not noticed, but I was thinking that for more, I think we should have more input from our citizens. We have once a month where there's, they can come and speak. And we don't have 50 to 100 people at our meetings. We have very few, and why not at the workshops have a comment period?
Well, I think part of our job, right, is to go out and speak with our community. But I need, we need the board.
Well, you may not get to everybody, because if you go to civic league meetings or church meetings or other community meetings, there's some folks that can come, and they can't come on the third Wednesday of the month.
I think it's something that can be considered.
It's not a, I don't think it's a good idea to have only one input.
Right, but. They have more than one input, they have emails, phones, our website.
Not the same.
Well, I'm just saying they do have more than one input. I don't want that to be what people take away from this conversation.
He wasn't saying that.
I was saying one input in this room.
Right, well, the design of this work session is so that we can take the information that's proposed and for action at our business meeting and really get down to understanding that. And if we're going to allow public comment in our work session, we might not get that opportunity to really digest what is expected of us and the materials presented to us.
I think.
That doesn't make a difference, I mean.
Yeah.
It doesn't make a difference.
And I think, you know, to the point of using meeting time efficiently too, is that this is our work session so that we can understand what it is, exactly what Dr. Martin just said about what we're going to make, take a vote on in the next, in the next business meeting. And so I personally, you know, we do have, there are multiple ways to provide comment. And I think that that's, this allows us to have real focused attention on doing the board work and allowing community input in person in that manner. You know, although there's various ways to get that input every day, but, you know. So I'm in support of keeping, I think we're actually, we allow probably the greatest opportunity for citizen input than some other divisions that only allow their citizens to speak on agenda items. Whereas that's something that we have over the years have kind of fought against, where we've had board members who's just wanted us to have citizen comment on agenda items versus non-agenda items. And that's been something we fought to keep, agenda and non-agenda items, to give as broad of a base and an opportunity for citizens to comment and bring their concerns to us. So I think that where a lot of boards don't even do that. So I personally would like to keep the structure that we've been doing. That's my personal view.
Well, we're talking about Norfolk, we're not talking about other boards. And my thing is, let's ask the community, ask them what they think. Should we do it twice a month? Put a survey out or something, ask them what they want.
I like the idea of a survey, get, just get input from the, our constituents, our citizens, even our scholars, those that are in the school. These are all people that we're responsible to. This gives us more accountable, or them, an opportunity, more opportunity to make us accountable.
Right, but we potentially, we start our meetings at four o'clock, and we start our business meetings at seven. Is four o'clock potentially an even bigger barrier than making it here at seven o'clock?
Well, that's where I was going, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me finish.
Extended, yes, extended time. It's, it's, so is the board willing to extend time, you know, in a work session to, you know, provide for public comment? I would love to see a model, what that looks like, if that even exists. What does a board, a board having public comment during a work session? Whereas, do we have a model, what that looks like?
We can look into it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious if there's a board that.
Because is the time personal with us or is it our community? If they don't have a problem, then we shouldn't have a problem.
Well, I don't, I don't think anyone said it was a problem. I was just asking that a work session is normally for an opportunity for the board to do board work and have conversations around the table, around certain agenda topics, and really flush out, especially if there's a topic that's moving to action. We have to have opportunity when we're in the room together to have conversations around specific topics. And a business meeting is what a business meeting is, is a meeting where the board takes action. So, and for us to do that, we have to have our opportunity, again, when we're all together around the table, to discuss agenda items that may move forward to action or just having conversations around a specific agenda topic. So, I mean, we get together twice a month, twice a month, and this is an opportunity for us to have those conversations.
We're only twice a month.
Yeah, well, yeah, so that's where I am, I just.
Well, I was going to say, I do think there are ways that we could do much better at getting input from our citizens through, you know, not just through the surveys, but, you know, the comments. I think there was something I was recently looking up, whether it be, you know, first or second reading of a policy, for instance, and this is something we've talked a lot about. It's like you have to click multiple times to get to the, where you even see that a policy is up for a first or second reading. And so a community member wouldn't even know, you know? And so those are things that, those are processes that I'd like to see improved, not necessarily to provide time in our meetings, but provide greater accessibility through the, all the other modes of communication that we have. So, but, you know, as far as our meeting time goes, it needs to be very focused. And so I continue to support what we're currently doing. But I'm open to feedback, you know?
So in my time on the board, we went from public comment being any topic to public comment being only agenda items, to splitting it into two, where one was agenda items and one was for non-agenda items.
And at the end of the meeting.
Yes, and at the end of the meeting, it was the non-agenda items.
Nine o'clock.
And then we've, through all of that, come back to allowing the public to speak on non-agenda and agenda items. And I think that's, that's been the best option, and I think that's why we came back to it. So we've tried other ways and ultimately came back to the original one that most, every school board uses.
Well, you have new members on this board, that's what y'all try.
No, no, this has been through different boards.
But we're new, I'm talking about for us right now.
Yeah, and that's.
He's just giving historical context.
Yeah. And this has been different iterations of the board, not the same members of the board, because it's not one that I supported, it's not, you know. We had more restrictive, we had folks on the board that wanted more restrictive.
Comments.
Comment, more restrictive comment period than what we currently have. And so both championed having broader comment periods, so.
Comment. But that may have been the history, that may have been the way things are. But we have people, our constituents and all, that's changing, and we need to change with them. And if, and I like the idea of letting them tell us what they want us to. We're here to serve them, not them serve us.
I agree with you, I had no one saying they're here to serve us. I'm just, I'm just giving you a historic perspective of what has gone on in Norfolk Public Schools since I've been on the board.
And there will be, always be change. There will always be change.
And we, and we, I know, and we have the same model as our city council has. I mean, they have a work session, and then they follow up. Two weeks later, they have their business meeting where they conduct business. And that's, you know, that's what work session is. Yeah, it's kind of standard practice, but, you know.
Any other?
Yes.
Future?
Uh, joint, yes.
Joint meeting, yes.
Yes, joint meeting with the city council.
And you know what, with the joint meeting, if we could, and I think I shared this with my counterpart on city council, if we can get a standard, no, not standard, I'm sorry, reoccurring meeting on the calendar, so we won't find ourselves every year trying to get a date on the calendar. If we're going to say we're going to meet.
Said that.
I know, but we're going to have to be intentional about if we're going to say we're going to meet in the spring and meet in the fall, let's get some dates on the calendar and, you know, beforehand, so we won't find ourselves every year trying to find a date that works for everyone.
I sent a response to the chair this morning, and that was included in there for her response she was spending today, that we do a two-year calendar with city council, determining it. There was a communication, and I forgot what it was about, that went out today. But that was my suggestion for additions in there, is we should do that. Forecast it, we, actually, we should do the same with our monitoring calendar, because there's most what you see on there for this year is going to be the same next year, graduation is going to happen, all these other things. And it can be easily put up there as a general guide for two to three years. And then we can put lots of information on there, so it doesn't get lost. I think that'll do it for this meeting, all the way to the next.
On to the last agenda item, meeting is adjourned.